Call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners to order Tuesday, March 19th. Commission Chambers, roll call please.
Neimik.
Here.
Banajak.
Here.
Mallett.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
Radke.
Here.
Poyer.
President.
Begic.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. We ask again today for your help and guidance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, not a doubt, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other.
Okay, we have the minutes from 2/20/24.
Motion approved.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the agenda approval. I believe we have an addition to the agenda.
One late addition, Mr. Chairman, resolution number 2024-41. I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need a vote of five or more to put it on the agenda, so it has been added. We'll bring that up later on. Otherwise, with that addition, we need agenda approval.
I'm on the agenda.
I'll support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen inputs, we have five minutes. Sign the register. You can put your address if you want to, not necessary.
Oh, we're gonna have Mr. Carline go first.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry, scooped you.
If you talk to my faculty, they will tell you that I speak only in chunks about an hour or more. I understand the limitations here are a little less than that. I'll try to conform. Also, at my age, I don't reflect on years past. I reflect on decades past. So I will start with that. Two decades ago, I did not know Andreas Teich until we got together working in support of our library. Since that time, he has been a committed and dedicated supporter of the Bay County Library System. He is one of those who is important to Bay City. You could not do better when you decide on who our next library board meeting could be. You could not have a more dedicated or committed member to the library and to our community than Andreas Teich. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's in an hour?
No.
You kept it under five. Thank you. Mr. Krieger.
Thank you. It's nice to follow my boss, especially when he's gonna be 100 years old. Not bad, huh? So my name is Ernie Krieger. Live at 785 Bay Road, Appleton Beach. And the reason why I'm here is to talk about Bayern Act Behavioral Health. I've been a board member there for a number of years, and I'm up for reelection, and I'm hoping that new people will look and realize that there's a lot that goes on at behavioral health. We don't work with individuals that need our support, but we work with the people that take care of the individuals of Bay County. And we're very blessed to have the individuals working for us to take care of the residents. So I'm hoping that when it comes time to vote, I can count on you to continue to give me the opportunity to serve Bay County. So appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Pamela Schumacher, and I also applied for one of the open positions on the Bay Airnet Behavioral Health Authority. I know that you've probably already seen my application, and I would appreciate your consideration when you vote today, and thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to apologize to you for coming on such a short notice. My name is Pat Beeson, and I'm your appointee on Region 7, Division on Aging. I'm here today just for a few minutes to explain a couple of things to you and have my director tell you what's going on at Region 7. We have received notification from the federal government that we are getting zero funds for now. Now, the funds that we get from the federal government are the Older American Act funds, and they supply the funds for Meals on Wheels, Respite Care, and Bath programs. So if I could, I would be able to come up for just a second. I know we want to keep it short and sweet. I do have something for you to look at, so you got an idea of what we're talking about. This week on Friday, they're supposed to vote for the state, for the federal government budget. We're hoping they put the funds back in. We want you to know that I've been the treasurer there for 15 years. We have plenty of money to make sure our programs are all covered, so we don't have to worry about that. But what I'm worried about, as your person on that board, I take care of all the, watch out all the bills and everything. I am thinking for in the future, if our funds keep getting cut, cut, and cut, you know, we won't have money to do that. We employ about 150 people right now that do all sorts of things for Bay County, Saginaw, Midland. So we cover 10 counties. So Bob will give you an idea, because I don't want to talk too long, of what we're talking about today and what it costs, okay?
So I apologize. I was just asked this morning to put some data together for this body in regards to the possible shutdowns. But what you don't know, there was an interruption in cash flow. We do not know how long it will go, even if they approve this deal they're talking about and things like that. I also apologize, because the first one, I just wanted to show you our revenues and expenses and net income over the, since I've been at the agency. So it's a slow, steady growth. We've gone from, I believe, just under $30 million in 2016 to now we're a $43 million agency, providing $43 million worth of services. And our net income has gotten to a point where we're trying to keep it steady, not grow it, not lose it. We had a bad year last year, and I'll give that in my full report when I come to you to give that. But mainly because of inflation and the Medicaid program not paying what it should have paid. Totally out of our control, but we're back in control this coming year. Wanted to do that. So what we're talking about on this chart is the Older American Act dollars, because the rest of our funding is mostly Medicaid. This is our flexible fund. This is where we give money to Beth York over there for your meals and in-home care to seniors and veterans. And so that's pretty critical funding. And I apologize, this is 22 numbers. We're right in the middle of our audit, so I don't have actual 23 numbers. But in '22, we're looking at a $9 million funding thing. Only half of that is federal, so that's 4.5. If you go back to the other chart and you interpret it, we've got $21 million in the bank. When you minus cash flow of $11 million, we've got about somewhere between $8 and $10 million. So we can fund the program for at least a year, we believe, barring, you know, unforeseen other things. So we want to just tell you, we're stable. We're flowing the money. We don't want to stop flowing the money, because whenever the spigot turns back on, if you didn't deliver the services, they don't, you don't get to recoup those lost services because you didn't provide it. So it's kind of like a double-edged sword, but as always, we're managing it for you. Right now, we're pretty stable. So, and you know, we've been getting calls from several counties about, hey, what's going on, and how's this gonna affect our Council on Aging or Department on Aging. I can answer any questions, but right now, steady is, as we go, is still the word.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I would like to address some public input, please.
Hi, I'm Colleen Mallett. I'm currently a seated commissioner, but I'm also the vice chair of the Mental Health Board Authority. I've served on the board for 12 years. Not that long ago, one of our commissioners approached me and said that he knew this appointment was near and dear to my heart. It is, and I'll tell you why. I have a brother with a disability. His name is Tim. He's 63 years old, and he's Down Syndrome. I am his guardian and have been for over 30 years. I'm gonna tell you a little story about Tim, and you'll know why this is important to me. When Tim was six years old, he came screaming, crying uncontrollably into the house. My mom and dad were in a panic, checking him over from head to toe to find out what was wrong with him. When they finally got him to settle down, he said the neighbor kids told him he was retarded, and he didn't know what that was. That moment, I looked at the faces of my mom and dad and saw the tear in my dad's eye. That is a face and a look that I've seen my entire life, not only from my parents, but any other parent or family member that has a child or an adult with a disability. All I can say is, I'm not like-minded. I am outspoken at times. You will never see me in the box. I think outside the box as much as I can. My appointment to this board is very, very important, not only to myself, but to the 6,500 people we serve in this county. I have the experience on both sides. I've worked on the public side. I've grown up with it my whole life. I've served a number of committees on the state and local level. And all I can say is that I hope you will make the right decision and not make this a political thing, but make it who is the best of the six candidates to continue to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I'm on What's My Line. So my name is Andreas Teich. I'd like to speak on my behalf of my request to be appointed to the Bay County Library Board. So I came to this country as a six-year-old when my father was given an expat assignment from Germany. I was dropped into an Episcopal Day School kindergarten where Mrs. Chandler spoke no German, and I spoke no English. The first words I learned were white and chocolate, because I had to make a milk decision. And over the time, I got to learn English in that classroom. But the place that was most important to me in my development of English was the public library in Southern Pines, North Carolina. It was an old house, and I just remember the librarians were very gracious and grateful to have this young man come in. You see, when you come on an expat assignment, you only bring the clothes on your back. You don't bring a whole library with you, particularly, it was German books, so they were pretty very helpful. So that library was a very important part of my early childhood. And whenever I go to the library now, I'm always delighted by the number of children that I see who are experiencing the same kind of thing. Maybe not German kids, but all those kids. The other day, I was there, and there was a field trip, and the library was much louder than it normally is, as all those kids were sort of being there. I've always had a library card. Every community I've lived in, I've had a library card. And until I came to Bay County, I really was a user of library services. I didn't understand all the background stuff that goes behind it. But in this community, shortly after I got here, there was a village vote for a new library system. There were new buildings to be made, and the community voted it down. And I was rather surprised, because I never thought a community would vote no on a library village, but it turned out they hadn't done their homework. And the next time around, I wanted to be a part of that, to help make the decisions for the community, to inform them why the new libraries were a good thing. And as all of us know, 20 years later, we have the finest library system around. All those buildings are being used on a regular basis by folks. Since that time, as Don Carlin graciously mentioned, I have been involved in a number of those projects to continue to fund the libraries and to make sure they stay open. It is my desire now to serve on the board and to make sure that the services and the success of our library continue and that it is financially well-operated. So I ask your consideration for my support, and I thank Tom Herrick for letting me know and Von Begic for saying, yeah, it sounds like a good idea for you to apply. So I'm glad to be part of that and hope to serve well.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Last chance. Public comment is closed. All right, we have a presentation. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the tribute, and then we can vote on adopting it, hopefully. So if you want to read the resolution.
... by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas in January 2024, since 1999, Donald J. Carline, a devoted educator in public service...
Retired from service on the Bay County Library Board of Trustees after 17 years. And whereas with his retirement, the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive are extremely proud to acknowledge the outstanding career of Donald J. Carline. And whereas recognizing the role of a public library system, Mr. Carline dedicated his efforts to promote Bay County's library system, focusing on what a library offers to a community in terms of education, lifelong learning, and entertainment. And whereas, best known for his impactful role at Delta College as a former president between 1961 and 1992, Mr. Carline has been honored by Delta College for his professional, personal, civic, and philanthropic pursuits, and was honored as a two-time recipient of the college's Award of Distinction and for his efforts in implementing the Delta College Foundation. And whereas, in addition to his tireless efforts on behalf of the Bay County Library System and Delta College, Donald J. Carline's other past service includes Chair of the State Theater Board and Development Committee, Member of the Bay City Downtown Development Authority, Member of the group dedicated to the revitalization of the historic Battery Park, and 2020 Parade Marshal of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive take this opportunity on behalf of all the citizens of Bay County to express their heartfelt appreciation to Donald J. Carline for his many years of selfless community service and to recognize his contribution to the success and growth of the Bay County library system.
Looking for a motion?
So motion.
Support.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I went out to see Don. Found out we have the same birthday.
Well, I'd say so much thank you. You are so kind and generous. My service on the library board was a pleasure. I enjoyed it, and we have done some really fine things at the library, and I am grateful for your kindness. Thank you very much.
Get a picture here. Just a few words. It did take Mr. Carline a couple tries to get on the library board, so if anybody doesn't get on today, they can keep trying to get it on the board. So we have the presentation here for you, if you want to be able to sign, by Commissioners and by County Executive Barsha. And I think the clerk might be on that, too. So congratulations, and we're gonna get a photo op over here. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Von, if I could. Von, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to what the chairman said. President Carline, you will always be our president of Delta College. 31 years of leadership, making our community college in Bay County one of the best in the nation. And you know, those of us who reside in Bay County always have known that Delta College played a key role in preparing our people for good careers and gainful employment, the ability to remain here and start their families, and by preparing the skilled workforce that we've come to know for so many decades. And it wasn't until, I guess, I was serving in Congress, and I realized that Delta College was one of the pioneers, no pun intended, of the league that, I'm trying to think of the...
League of Innovation.
Yeah, League of Innovation, which I believe when it was started, was about 20 community colleges across the country. And you ranked right up there with Maricopa Community College with 100,000 students. But you've been not only a leader here in Bay County in higher education and vocational career education, but across the region, the state, and even recognized nationally. You have been a blessing and a real asset to everyone who've grown up in this region, and especially in Bay County. Those students have had the opportunity to achieve their dreams because of the great quality education and training that they received at Delta College. And numerous, you're, all of your, we could be here all day giving you accolades about all of your service. And today, you're being recognized by the board for your library service, but you and Betty devoted your lives to public service, and we are so grateful. The people of Bay County are very grateful for you, Don, and I wish Betty could be here to see it, see this recognition.
I would not take the opportunity to tell you something that I bet none of you know because of the lack of news coverage these days. Delta College has been in national championships of the community colleges. They have won the national championship in soccer, baseball, and basketball. And I don't know any other community college that has...
I don't think so.
The interesting thing about the, I'm, the interesting thing about the baseball team is they won the national championship the first year we had a team at Delta. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, thanks, Don.
All right, so we have the applications for appointment to Bay County Library Board. So it's one five-year term, expiring June 30th, 2026, so about two, a little over two more years. So we need to receive these two applications that we have.
Motion received.
Support.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we are going to do one vote, one person, no ranked voting or anything like that. So we each have one vote. So we will have the clerk call the roll.
Neimik.
Charles Park.
Banajak.
Charles Park.
Mallett.
Andreas Teich.
Herrick.
Andreas.
Radke.
Andreas.
Poyer.
Park.
Begic.
Charles Park.
You forgot.
You forgot, Tom.
You forgot, Tom.
Three for Teich.
Tom.
Yeah, Tom, there were three for Teich.
So we have three votes for Andreas Teich and four votes for Charles Park.
As I said before, we're always looking for good applicants, and we do have another appointment in June, so that will be a full appointment at that time. So we'll move on to Bay Airnet Behavioral Health Authority. I don't know if we have to make, yes, we should make a motion to appoint Charles Park to that position.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, we voted for it already. Bay Airnet Behavioral Health, nominations, committee review, eligibility results. We have the letter from the Bay Airnet Behavioral Health Board, and these are the nominees that they've submitted to us, and they meet the qualifications for the position. So I need a vote to approve the nominations committee review.
So move.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have the request for appointments. You have six candidates for three positions. It's a three, three-year terms commencing April 1st, 2024, and expiring March 31st, 2027. So we need to receive and make the three appointments. So I guess we'll do, call the roll.
Banajak.
Oh, which ones?
You have three picks.
Just, no, Patrick Conley, Pat McFarland, and Pam Schumacher.
Mallett.
Krieger, McFarland, Mallett.
Herrick.
I'll vote for three people that are here. Krieger, Schumacher, and Mallett.
Poyer.
Conley, McFarland, Schumacher.
Neimik.
Patrick.
Conley, Patrick McFarland, and Pamela Schumacher.
Schumacher, but Conley actually is three. So there should be three.
Three for...
Right? Conley is three? Yeah. Okay. And then you're part of the Schumacher. Begic.
I have Patrick Conley, Patrick McFarland, and Pamela Schumacher.
So Lisa, can you check? I believe we have, there are votes for Peters, four for Conley, three for Mallett, three for Krieger, five for McFarland, six for Schumacher?
Six for...
Six for McFarland. Six for McFarland. Six, six, three. Three for Krieger, sorry, Lisa?
Yes.
Mallett? Four for Conley. Schumacher didn't get six. Did you guys...
Okay. So we have...
Can you see it?
Yeah. So we have Patrick Conley, we have Patrick McFarland, we have Pamela Schumacher as the three appointees to the position. I guess we're all set. We should move to make the appointments.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City of Bay City, notification of a public hearing establishing a two-neighborhood enterprise zone. We need a motion to receive.
So move.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City of Bay City, notification of a public hearing establishing a two-neighborhood enterprise zone. We need a motion to receive.
So move.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City of Bay City, notification of a public hearing establishing a two-neighborhood enterprise zone. We need a motion to receive.
So move.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me move on to the Second Committee of the Whole on March 12th.
Okay. Resolution number 2024-35, Midstate Health Network 2024 Intergovernmental Agreement. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-36, Waiver of Ordinance Adoption Process Suspended Through December 31st, 2024. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-37, Benefit Change in Retirement Ordinance Amendment, Sheriff's Office. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then we have one for the District Court Administrator Office Staffing. I move to receive.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? carries or received? And Mr. Herrick, would you do the reports of the Board of Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2024-38, The Reports of the County Executive for February. I move this resolution.
All right.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-39, Support for Citizens of, for Local Choice. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? I know they're all collecting signatures. They were at Monterey Township Hall the other day, so if you're so inclined to vote for local control, sign the petition. Only once, though. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-40, The Bay County Road Commission Authorization for Bond Sale. I move this resolution.
Support.
We have a large packet of information. Mr. Lillo, do you want to speak on this at all? You can come up to the podium. I know you're good for it, but you can tell us what you're doing with the money.
In my back pocket, so. Good evening, I guess afternoon, evening. Basically, two Broward Road projects for this bond request, three-mile road, which has been bid and came in at budget. And the other one, from Midland Road to Am 84 and Three Mile, and the other one is Midland Road, US 10 to Carter, which also came in $773,000 under budget. So we got favorable bids, we're within the bond window, and this resolution would be the last piece of the puzzle for us to sell bonds, to be able to pay a portion of both of those. The Three Mile job is $5 million, the Midland Road job is $4 million, so we're talking about nine plus. So anyway, we'd like to at least thank, at least, that's more than Amber and Shawna and taking the hits from S&amp;P for an hour and a half. That was just, that was unbelievable. The Finance Department, they did a phenomenal job, Lindsay, for checking and making sure everything was, you know, cool. And, you know, people at the county that helped us dramatically. We definitely put you guys, I will admit, through the wringer for, we didn't have to do a whole lot, and the staff here was phenomenal to work with. So we really appreciate it, we appreciate the board's support, the executive's support and all the support, and, you know, I thank my mom and my grandmother for this award. And so, anyway, other than that, and just as a minor note, just because I'm on, you know, maybe people in TV land, this is, there was an accident at Bangor and Wilder that wiped out the signal. In fact, it tipped our pole into the primary and fried everything. Just to let people know that that happened, I don't know any details, I just got a call before I came in here, but I thought since I'm on TV and I've got an audience, that it's going to be two-way, there's two-way stop right now on Bangor, Wilder's going through, but just to let everybody know that that did happen, I don't know any details, but we're working on trying to figure out now what do we do? So, but it wiped the signal, knocked it right down. So anyway, thank you, and look forward.
Anybody else? So along Three Mile.
Yes.
They're digging up, they're doing, I think it's a gas line, Consumers is there?
Yes.
Moving the gas line, and then the ditch is going to be, or the drain, I should say, is going to be moved over a little bit then, or?
Yeah, a lot. Yeah, both north of Salzburg to the west, and then south of Salzburg, it's going to go to the east. So we have at least eight to 10-foot shoulders.
People have been asking about what's going on out there, and of course, the notices were sent out, I know, but.
Yeah, and yeah, there's, there's two right in a row, it's April 16th, 23rd, I think this was the 16th, for Monterey Township Hall, 6th to 9th for open house, no, if you want to ask questions or anybody you know that wants to find out about the project, we are holding a public open house.
Yep. Thank you.
This 6 million, is that the largest we've ever done?
That's the largest, we, I don't know if the Road Commission, you guys have more history than me, I don't know if the Road Commission's ever asked for bonds before.
This is the first, but we're pleased that we're in such a sound financial position that our rating will allow these bonds to be sold at a lower interest rate, saving the taxpayers' dollars, but I want to thank you for your leadership, Jim, on all you've done across Bay County in terms of making sure our infrastructure is adequate, and it's always a struggle for more revenue. But hopefully, with the federal infrastructure bill, some of that money, money come down. And I know this particular project has been a passion of yours and the local residents, and started out with, I believe, an appropriation from Senator Daley.
Yes.
And then from there, as you said, the costs went up, but we're very pleased the county could, could work together with the Road Commission and yourself to make sure that this project gets done expeditiously.
For us, as far as I know, I'm, yes.
And it's a 15-year bond, right?
10.
10-year, okay.
10. We had to make that clarification, it was 15 for a little while.
Yeah.
But no, 10, we don't want to encumber our budget any longer than we have to.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Otherwise, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the addition 2024-41, the debt book software budget adjustments.
Did I do that yet?
Yeah.
Did I do 41 yet?
No.
Yeah.
I'm going to do it right now.
You're going to do it now? We had to add it to the agenda, so now we got to move on it.
Yeah, I was waiting for that, for.
I'm going to ask, I think Shaw, maybe, something to explain.
Let me make, let me do the thing first. So, resolution number 2024-41, I move this resolution.
Support.
Sorry, I scooped it. But.
We got it.
Sure. So this is software to help with compliance with GASB 87 and 96. So we knew this was coming, we budgeted for it, it just unfortunately was more than the amount that we budgeted for, so we are asking for that. In the first year, the implementation of the software, we're going to be paying for that, we're thinking in the future, we won't need that same implementation support, so this cost should go down.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to do a redo on 2024-39, Support for Citizens for Local Choice.
Well, we didn't finish that, did we?
I guess we just seen the motion.
I'll support. I thought we did.
Yeah. And discussion?
Didn't we do that already?
Just a point, Mr. Chair, a request was made for the ayes, but none for the nays. So we just need that on the record.
All right.
So you want me to read it again?
I guess, do it again.
Resolution number 2024-39, Support for Citizens for Local Choice. I move this resolution.
All right.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the addition 2024-41, the debt book software budget adjustments.
Did I do that yet?
Yeah.
Did I do 41 yet?
No.
Yeah.
I'm going to do it right now.
You're going to do it now? We had to add it to the agenda, so now we got to move on it.
Yeah, I was waiting for that, for.
I'm going to ask, I think Shaw, maybe, something to explain.
Let me make, let me do the thing first. So, resolution number 2024-41, I move this resolution.
Support.
Sorry, I scooped it.
We got it.
Sure. So this is software to help with compliance with GASB 87 and 96. So we knew this was coming, we budgeted for it, it just unfortunately was more than the amount that we budgeted for, so we are asking for that. In the first year, the implementation of the software, we're going to be paying for that, we're thinking in the future, we won't need that same implementation support, so this cost should go down.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to do a redo on 2024-39, Support for Citizens for Local Choice.
Well, we didn't finish that, did we?
I guess we just seen the motion.
I'll support. I thought we did.
Yeah. And discussion?
Didn't we do that already?
Just a point, Mr. Chair, a request was made for the ayes, but none for the nays. So we just need that on the record.
All right.
So you want me to read it again?
I guess, do it again.
Resolution number 2024-39, Support for Citizens for Local Choice. I move this resolution.
All right.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, that was all, I believe, from Mr. Herrick.
That's all. Trust me, that's enough.
That was a lot. We have reports of the county executives.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Just some good news that we got from Congressman Kildee. I got a call last week, and the federal budget was approved and the extension included in it was our request for $300,000 that Weston and I had requested at the congressman's office, $300,000 for the Bay County Land Bank, and also $1 million for infrastructure improvements at the Bay County Community Center, especially if we could do something with the locker rooms for the men and women. That, those are the original locker rooms, and also a couple of windows I think need replacements, so that, both requests were reduced when it went to Conference Committee of the US Senate in the House, and reduced by about one-third. So there'll be $200,000 for the Bay County Land Bank and $777,000 for the improvements at the community center. And those are, those have already been signed into law, so we can count on that revenue forthcoming. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I heard it was signed by the president, so must be official. So Christian will be busy with another project. County Clerk, I ask you to give us an election report about the election we just had.
Yep. So, again, this was our first election that we had to implement early voting for, so I gave a presentation previously that because of the passage of proposal 22-2, all voters now have the right to nine days of in-person precinct style early voting. And in Bay County, we chose to, well, I offered it, and then all of our 18 jurisdictions chose to contract with the county, and we have one central early voting site. So early voting turnout was low throughout the entire state of Michigan. The presidential primary is also a fairly low turnout election historically. In Bay County, about 3% of our voters who voted in the presidential primary voted at the early voting location. Our total turnout for the presidential primary was just over 24% of our total active voters, and most of those voters also voted absentee. Early voting made up about 16% of the total in-person turnout, so if we look at the numbers of the people who showed up on Election Day in person, and then the numbers of the people who showed up at our early voting precinct, you know, a voter who showed up in person, 16% of those voters were at our Bay County early voting precinct. We had a total of 606 voters throughout the nine days. We had an average of 14 workers at our precinct per day. We had three different stations where a voter could be checked in and issued a ballot, and we also had to have ballot-on-demand equipment at each of those stations. So to check voters in with three different stations, ballot-on-demand, that took six different workers, six different laptops, to be able to handle our countywide precinct, issue ballots, and check in a voter. We offered our voters a choice of whether they wanted to vote using a traditional paper ballot or vote using our Express Vote ballot marking device. And the reason why we did that is our Express Vote ballot marking device ballot is a lot quicker to print. A traditional paper ballot where you circle in the bubbles on your ballot can take about two minutes to print per ballot. So an Express Vote ballot is more readily available to voters. The Express Vote machines have existed in our county for a number of years, but they're fairly underutilized, or they have been historically. It's used as an ADA compliant machine, but it's a touchscreen device that allows a voter to help fill out their ballot. So we, it also doesn't let you make, the voter make a mistake. So you know, if it's the candidates for president, you can't overvote, you can't choose all of the candidates, it only lets you make one selection. An Express Vote machine can also read the ballot aloud to you. You can change the contrast, so it's a black background instead of a white. You can have the zoom function, so the text is increased and makes it bigger. So we had, I think, six of those set up in our early voting precinct, and we had someone who was set up at the door who asked each worker, or each voter who came in and said, "Do you want to see how to use our Express Vote machine?" If they said no, that's fine, just process is normal. But we also had a fake test election loaded on that machine so they could see how it works, like choose your favorite Michigan musician. What would you like the national, or the state logo to be? Just so they could see how to make your selections. And then it actually prints your ballot for you, and that's what you put through the tabulator. So it's not saving votes, we don't run results from that, but it assists a voter in filling out their ballot. And I will tell you, I have hand-counted quite a few precincts, voters do the goofiest things when they fill out ballots. I've seen check marks, I've seen where they circle the bubble instead of fill it in, so an Express Vote machine kind of bypasses all of those errors. Our busiest days were the first weekend and by far the last weekend, and I do expect to see a number, an increase in our voter turnout at our early voting location by the time we get to the November general election. It seems like we had positive feedback from everyone who went through, we were able to process voters smoothly, quickly, efficiently, and I think once the word gets out that this is an option available, and we continue to push to explain what the difference is, that this is an option available, I think voters will take advantage of it. The challenges that we faced for this early voting is that it was the presidential primary, so it's a closed, it's a closed election, which means a voter has to choose whether they want a Democratic ballot, Republican ballot, or in our case, if you lived in a jurisdiction or a precinct which had a ballot proposal also on the ballot, you had a nonpartisan ballot. So we had, I think, 115 different ballot styles that we had to have our workers know the correct ballot to issue to the voter. So that took a lot of training, it took a lot of checks and balances to make sure that our workers were printing the right ballots and issuing the right ballots to the workers, or to the voter. We also did not have our software that was supplied by the state available to us until two weeks prior to the election, so that was a lot of just right before the election, train our workers, this is what you do, create instructions so that they know step by step how to issue a ballot to a voter. I know that it was new, but that was not ideal from, for the state of Michigan to wait so long to release that program for us. And then I also, I was hoping to see more AV ballots in our precincts. So this is the first election, too, that voters could actually bring their absentee ballot into a precinct, both Election Day and early voting precinct, and instead of dropping off at a drop box, or instead of dropping off to the clerk's office, they were able to tabulate their own absentee ballot. We didn't see a huge turnout of voters choosing to do that, which is fine, but I think in the future, we can try to wait, raise awareness of that. If you're driving to your clerk's office to put your ballot in a drop box, if you're passing by the community center, you might as well. might as well come in and tabulate it yourself. So, things that we've learned throughout the process is to have some continuity with our workers. We were lucky that we had a great turnout of people who are willing to work our precinct. I think Keith just looked at the numbers, and we had over 70 workers who ended up working throughout the nine days. So, everyone, everyone who went through our training and filled out the proper paperwork, we wanted to give a chance to at least work one day. We had lots of people who wanted to work all nine days, so that's great, too. But, you know, there were some positions at our precinct where we learned that it, it will be better in the future to have them work more than just one day, or have them work for as long as they would like to, so we don't have to retrain every morning. And then things that went well is the closing of the polls was quick and efficient, so at the end of early voting, the Sunday before the election, we are just suspending the polls. All of the days of early voting, at the end of the day, we're just suspending the polls. We don't actually close the polls and run results until after 8:00 PM on Election Night. That was the same for early voting. So, on Election Night, we had to bring in election workers, pull out the tabulators, and actually close the polls, and finally find out the results for that precinct. That process took, I mean, probably a half hour to print out the reports, have our workers sign all the materials, seal all of the materials that needed to be sealed for retention, so that was great, that that went well. And then even between, for suspending and opening the polls every single day, by the time we got through the first weekend, we were able to do that well, under an hour or two, so. We were happy with that. Our canvas of the early voting site was quick, we had time to organize all the, our materials, so the canvassers were easy, were able to sort through that very easily. We also had great workers, again, you know, we, I was happy with their turnout. You know, I know that some people made friends during, while they were working in the precinct, that they were stationed to work near each other, that they were, I think, two workers said that they graduated high school together and hadn't spoken in decades, and then they were, they were just reconnected during early voting, working in the precinct. And I don't know if Keith wants to add anything, he was there every, no, okay, he was there. He was there every single day. A lot of time was put in prior to the election and then during the canvas, so he, there was a lot of hours to actually be the site supervisor during the early voting period. I have also made a point to say that it was not easy to do this, it was a lot of work to implement this, and it will be a lot of work in the future, but I still think that for Bay County, a countywide precinct was and is the best way to do it. So, if anyone has any questions? No? Okay.
I would point out that I took a friend and he put a dot, but didn't read it.
No, well...
You have to fill in, fill it in pretty good, I don't know how much you got to fill, but you got to fill the dot in if you're going to do it that way, so that's why, good reason to do the touchscreen.
It is.
Thank you also for your leadership on organizing this. As you know, it's the constitutional amendment that the voters voted for, provided for early nine, you know, voting nine days prior to the election, and what you're doing at the community center is saving the townships and other units of government across Bay County and the city, the expense of having the staff there to wait for what might be a dribble, you know, of voters coming in for nine days. So, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about what you were able to, to do.
Thank you.
You and your staff, Keith, and the rest of your clerk's staff.
I would like to say one thing on behalf of this night, and I, all the departments that helped us, Tim, your department was wonderful, so thank you. Kristen, your department, Beth was wonderful, the maintenance, custodians, we couldn't have done it without all the people working with us, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to commissioner comments.
I would like to say congratulations to Bay County's Department on Aging, they had a perfect audit, great work to both Beth Urick and her team.
Congratulations, Beth.
Is that Dr. Beth?
Doctor.
I don't know.
I won't let her live it down, somebody called her a doctor, so, she's denying it. Tell me.
Hey, I'd like to thank the current commission and the previous commission for allowing me to serve the last 12 years on the mental health board. I applied for that board 12 years ago, four times before I was approved, and I was the first woman to serve from Bay County in, they think, probably 30 years, I don't know. Dick Byrne couldn't even remember the last time a woman was appointed to that board at that time. So, it's been an honor for me, I'll continue to advocate as always, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Vaughn, I would like to, to share this as far as a community service type thing. I'm going through cancer, and some of you know that at this point, and I'm kind of spreading the word every chance I get before a group, just to let them know, that I, I found out I had cancer in December, and I started chemo in January for 12 sessions, I'm going to have my seventh one tomorrow, and at, at this point, I'm, I'm feeling good, as far as that's concerned, the, the two reports showed that the cancer is receding. Also found out that Bay County is, is one of the largest counties as far as cancer is concerned, and going to Brighton and going to Ann Arbor, the number of people that are going in for, for chemo, it's, it's really amazing how many people have cancer in this state of Michigan, it's unbelievable. So, that, that's why, you know, if you feel something different going on in your body, get it checked out so, so soon, because you have to get it early, because it might be too late. Unfortunately, I got an early sign that I had it, and so I'm thankful for that, and I'm headed in the right direction, so I just wanted to pass this word to the folks out in Bay County about it, that if you don't feel quite right, go see your doctor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Unfinished business? New business? Public input, something chance at public input. Mr. Beeson.
Just, just when you thought you had enough of me, I'm back. I have a couple of things to tell you. On that board, I've been there about 15 years, and I'm your appointee, I love that job, and I take care of all the money all the time, because nobody else on that board of the 10 counties wants the job, nobody. So, I'm, I'm probably going to get reappointed for another year. I want you to know, because you don't, aren't privy to all this information, Bay County serves the most meals in all 10 counties that represent Region 7, Bay County does. You people don't realize, you do, to a certain extent, you have a golden star. We had a button push for confetti to come down. This lady is sitting right over here, her name is Beth, doing a fantastic job for Bay County. All other counties approach me all the time and say, "How do you do it?" She puts out a magazine, she takes care of all the meal sites, her people, I talk to her people, she don't know this, I talk to everybody, I don't care if they like me or not. They like Beth, they get along with her very well. Melvin is on the senior advisory board that you appointed to, he goes to the meal sites all the time, checks out all the meals, and I'd like you to give them a little overview of what you see at the meal sites, so you can't go to them, you, you're, you're busy people, so you, you put us on that board, so we're bringing back to you what we see. So, I'd like Mel to tell what he's been seeing.
Well, thank you, I've been doing it for quite a few years. What I see is people need this service, and it's a great, what we do for them is great. I go to the meal sites at least once a month, talk to the site managers, talking to the people. Years past, we had complaints on meals, we don't have that today, they're, they're happy. Well, my wife is a good cook, and sometimes they have extra meals, I give them, and then bring them home, because she likes the meals, so I mean, that tells it, we do a good job in Bay County, and I am happy to be able to give my time to Bay County to help our seniors. Thank you for helping me, and thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have about 150 people working at Region 7, in all areas, we have a PACE program in the thumb, and we're always expanding, but I want to tell you, Bay County is doing a great job for your seniors, you know, and in my business, my business is all me, I got good employees, but I'm always asking my customers, "How are they doing? Did you get taken care of?" This lady over here, I cannot say enough about, when I talk to them about how things are running, they, they have fallen in love with Beth, and Beth, you, you, I, I, I can't, I'm on a... Many years ago, when she was appointed in her job by Mr. Marsha here, we and me and Jim had several discussions, we were kind of wondering how she might do. She fooled us really good, because she's doing a terrific job. So, I just want you to know, you have the right people taking care of this, and, and the people that work for her love her, and, and I do, I don't make all her meetings, I'd like to, but my life is so darn busy, but in the wintertime, when it slows down, then I, like Thursday here, coming up, I will be at the meeting, and they, they do a great job. So, we are blessed to have the people we got and the programs, because all other counties say, "How do you do all them programs?" You know, in, in your meal sites and the stuff you do, they, they don't do that, those other, you know, their attendance is way down, they have closed a lot of their sites, they don't have the people, but our sites are doing fine, and they're picking up. Our board just recently in Cochran, where I'm at, we have three meal days now at the Cochran Township Hall, we only had two, so what happened? We get one more, right? I get a lineup of those people coming into my store saying, "Mr. Beeson, thank you for giving us one more day, we enjoy the, the meal site center so much, and the food is great." So, another thing is, you know, food is everything, if you don't have good food, people don't come. Well, guess why they're coming to Bay County? Because we have good food, like Mel said, they're all, nobody's complaining about the food or anything anymore, and it's, and it shows a reflection on our lady Beth here, who's doing a super job. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, Pat, thanks, Pat.
That's right, yeah, she has a good staff, and they love her, so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Beeson. Thank you. Any other public comment? Ms. Salinas, any announcements?
Mr. Marsha. Chair, just one sad announcement. I mentioned Congressman Kildee in securing the funds, as he did, $2 million also for the community project grant for the, our van conversion to our Bay County Health Services Center, and keep him and his family in your prayers, his brother was shot and killed in a domestic situation down in Genesee County, and so just keep Dan in mind, too. So, I know he's going to be enduring a lot of, you know, sadness and anxiety over, over the incident.
Thank you. I have some announced appointments that are coming up, ARNAF behavioral health authority, and we did those, June library board, as I mentioned, we have a five-year full term coming up in June, land bank authority, three-year term expiring. We have Bay County Department of Human Services, one at large, three-year term, that's a governor's appointment. December, we have Bay County Department, Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, one four-year term, and then the Department of Aging Advisory Committee, districts 2, 4, and 6, and one at large. All I have, any, no need for closed session?
There is no need for closed session, Mr. Chair.
Motion to adjourn?
Or...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.